John Lortz here. Here with Jenny Stewart and she is running for City of Montgomery Place One. And with me is David Smith, Billy Grab, Bob Bagley, Del Fessin, Pat Tibbs, and Dennis Tibbs. And as we discussed Jenny, welcome. And if you'd like to get us started with up to five-minute opening, that'd be great. And then we'll go around the room and Q and A.
I was born in Decatur, Illinois. Both sides of my family are all from the Chicago area. And my father was with IBM. I've been moved so after age 11, every two and a half years we moved. So I've lived in Evansville, Indiana, I've lived in Wichita, Kansas, and then Fort Worth, Texas, which brought me to Texas A&amp;M. I graduated cooati, Bachelor of Science in 1981 from Texas A&amp;M. Taught school for a year in Fort Worth, married my high school sweetheart Bob Stewart in 82. And then we moved to Andrews, Texas. And I substitute taught and eventually got a teaching job there. Moved to Midland, Texas, and we had two children Jessica and Lauren. And in 1991, we moved to Montgomery, Texas. I've been on the city council three terms previously. Every term that I've been on council, I've accomplished something. I got zoning passed in the city. I got the land from the Catholic Church for Cedar Break Park. And I was the sponsor for Cedar Break Park and secured a half million dollar grant for the park. I facilitated a purchase of the old Bus Barn site from the county for a dollar, which is the site that the new city hall is on. So I'm not somebody who just sits there. I'm somebody who is going to do something for the people of town.
All right, great. Thank you. On for that overview and the general question, you talked about some of the things you did, the zoning, Cedar Break Park, and the broker land, Alfred City Hall. Can you talk about a little bit more about each one? The zoning, Cedar Break Park, and what you did.
Well, Montgomery was a sleepy little town when we first moved there. Four-way stop, no stoplights in town. I think there were two, three policemen at the most. And their biggest job was getting traffic through the four schools, one school now. And somebody was surveying our property. And I went out and asked the men what was going on. And he said, "Oh, there's a big apartment complex coming in." And I said, "What are you talking about? Montgomery doesn't even have a grocery store." And so I went over to Mr. Butler's Texaco, the mayor, and said, "Are you aware that this is going on?" And he said, "Oh, no, we can't have that in this town," you know? And nobody I knew in town knew about it. Well, I got a phone call that night. And a woman called me and said, "Mr., you don't know me, but my husband was in Texaco when you were there. And when you went out the door, Mr. Butler said there's not a damn thing that little girl could do about this." So I got the town going and told them what was going to happen. And the community rallied and we had meetings. And we dug into things. I had a lawsuit put against me. And then we found out what was really going on with the developer. And he dropped the lawsuit. And I made the motion when I got on council for zoning. And it passed. So if that didn't happen, there would probably be a different side of Montgomery right now. It would look different.
What was the year that happened?
That was 94, I believe. And then as far as the park, I can't claim the idea for the park. Bessie Owen and Ms. Anna Weisinger and the Historical Society were behind putting a park. And they were adamant that the city have a park. And when Ms. Anna and Ms. Bessie asked you to do something, you did it. So the only property we thought was available or knew we could possibly get was the old Bus Barn site that the school had abandoned, but it was actually owned by the county. So that's what we had our eyes on because the city didn't have any money. So I was in church one day and the Catholic Church announced that they were going to sell any properties under 10 acres. That's what the diocese had decided. So I got ahold of the attorney from the diocese and told him that I was on the council. I had talked to the council about possibly finding another site. Could I look into this? So I just kind of made some inquiries and talked to people with the Catholic Church, park boards, different people about how we could possibly do this. And we were, I was able to secure the Catholic Church holding the property for two years till we came up with the funds. And meanwhile, I found people to help me secure. And we applied for and got a half million dollar matching grant. Now, the key thing about the matching grant is that we didn't have much money in the town. So the way the matching grant works is if you're going to do this work, then the state will match the value of this work and you can use that money for other things for the park. So we were able, with the community help and donations, to buy the park and do it basically with no cost or very little cost to the city.
So we've interviewed a couple of people already, so we're kind of more educated than we were. And one thing that came up was you guys have captured a tax rate lab. And it's 0.4. The county's 0.44, so there's really not much difference between the two. But the appraised value has gone up. In fact, I've noticed a little truck here. And this is only part of the years. But you can kind of look at that and it looks like, at least for those years, those five years, you can say that pretty high value Montgomery City went up, you guys have a share of this one, went up 25%. So that's it, your taxes have went up 25%.
Well, I think when we first moved here in 91, I think the tax rate in the city of Montgomery was the lowest in the county. And that's not the case. And we built our own house in 1998. And I know when we paid for it. And the taxes we pay on it, we've really done no improvements other than maintenance and painting. And I think that's kind of a sneaky way to, yeah, we don't have estate tax, income tax, but you raise your property tax enough and that's going to kill you. I mean, so many people, especially retired people, people on fixed incomes, don't need, I don't think, need to deal with this kind of problem.
So how do we, how do we get the council to move toward an effective tax rate? Which means basically canceling out the appraisal for all the property. I mean, for existing property, you know, you basically, if it goes up a hundred bucks, you reduce the tax rate to, you know, take in, how they can help us?
Well, I also think that they can, one of my, the things that I'm running on is raining and spending. We have a Montgomery Economic Development Council that several years ago, when Mr. Tran became our city manager, I suggested Willis had dissolved their Economic Development Corporation and put the funds into the general fund for the city. I think we should do that. You know, the head of MEDC made a motion a couple of meetings ago about buying a goat costume mascot for the city, up to 10,000. And it was seconded by my opponent. We don't need that. We need to be conservative on our spending. We need to quit reinventing the wheel and take care of infrastructure needs.
So both of these were seconded by your opponent? Both the walkie-talkies and the goat mascot? Or just the goat?
I don't know about the walkie-talkies, but the goat mascot was. I'd have to check the minutes for that.
So when you, so back to the effective tax rate, were you, are you willing to, David Smith, to work me toward an effective tax rate? Oh, I'm done, okay?
Yes, I will. Save it.
That was great. Yes, sure. Yeah, that was great.
As a councilman, councilwoman, whatever is appropriate, what would you like to see during your tenure, that term? What would you like to take on as your number one initiative? And what would it take to accomplish it?
Right now, back in the early 90s, we talked about looping the city. Ron Sikowski was our engineer. We've had many engineering plans since then. The city of Montgomery development plan that was put out in 2004 had plans to loop the city in water. It's never been done. I think we need to, secondly, work on our wastewater plants and systems and lines. I have had raw sewage spilling out of a manhole on our property for two and a half years. I have pictures and video that I've given to people in the city, in the administration, and nothing's been done. I think that's more important than a goat costume. So basic needs, another thing is a sidewalk. We have needed a sidewalk from downtown north to MLK along 149. Many, many people have been hit. No action taken. In 93 and 4, 5, we talked, and I didn't bring the paperwork with me, I would have shown you the schematic, of right turn lanes on 105 and 149. Well, the city has bought some of the property for the turn lane, but it should not take that long to get a project done. I would meet with our representatives. I would meet with HGAC. I would go to Austin. I mean, that's how I did the park. You can't sit and ask people and not do the work yourself. You have to have someone who's going to go out and do the work, and I'm willing to do it.
You mentioned earlier about being involved with the new city hall?
Yes.
When was that?
We moved into the new city hall in 2005. Because I was on council, 2005 to '07 was my last term. And that's when it was finished, I believe, '04 or '05.
So you all recently got, I believe, purchased a piece of property from the school district that used to be the school?
Not too many people know that. I found out at a, when the superintendent was talking about it.
And talk is that they're talking about turning that into a new city hall and a new police station and other things?
Well, first of all, the way we've always done it in Montgomery is when you have a project. Now, I understand buying real estate property in executive session because of the problems that can arise when its property is known. However, before you even make that jump, you have to assess what are your options? And there are other options. In fact, when we moved in to the city hall back in 2004, '05, we had an option if we outgrew that or ones we talked about. There was another mayor that looked in buying another building in town that could house both the city hall and the court and the police. Nobody, as far as I know, looked at any options. They just decided they'd buy that land. If you don't have enough money to buy the land, why do you have MEDC with almost $2 million in it? And you have to borrow from MEDC because the city doesn't have the money in the coffers? It doesn't make sense. So I would use a little more horse sense, so to speak, in to what endeavors we did and investigated a little more.
I'll hold the next group for later.
Okay. Obviously, I don't have all the pieces to the puzzle, so I'm going to try to get you to add some more for me. You were on city council for three terms.
Correct.
And then you took the sabbatical, whatever, for however long. And now you're interested again. What spurred your interest to run at this time and maybe not four years ago, eight, 10 years ago, whatever?
Well, within my business, I was changing from breeding quarter horses to thoroughbreds. So I'm changing complete breeds and that, that was a, I was very involved in what I was doing and the change there with my business. I kind of thought I'd done my time. I mean, it's a job you don't get paid for and I can't say it's loads of fun. But, and to me, if I'm going to do it, I'm going to spend the time to do it right and actually work at accomplishing something. Last thing I want to do is sit at a meeting twice a month and not accomplish something. So that's my goal. The reason, right now, the city is growing so fast and things, it seems like the rules are not being applied evenly to everybody. Things are being done without looking at the laws, rules, and ordinances, I believe. And spending's gotten out of control. And I don't like the way the city's being planned. I don't think, we've, we've had these studies, we've had these plans, we had a great A&amp;M study that's just been done and they're starting to incorporate it. But where's the action to get these things done? So that's, that's why I've decided to run, but I want to have my two other citizens on the council with me. I don't want to be on a council where I have to fight the drama. I want to get something done.
So when did the EDC come into existence? And can you get rid of it just by making a motion to get rid of it? And is there support other than you?
Oh, we'll probably hear about that when this comes out. I don't know. I have, I've mentioned it to a council person or two. I have mentioned it to the city administrator when I first met him. I gave him the article that was in the Connoisseur about Willis doing that. And anybody who knows anything about the town knows we have infrastructure needs badly. Before we had MEDC, we had MIDC. And that was about in 94 or '05. And one of their first expenditures was to give about $250,000, $250,000 to a developer and put water lines in, which ended up being a mistake because when Kroger came, they weren't the right-sized water lines to service the needs. So I don't want to throw money away at projects. I want to know what the need is, what are the obligations to fill the need, and do that.
So did the EDC pay for the goat? Is that one of their jobs?
That's one of their jobs. Yeah, that's under their guise.
And so they paid for the goat, they loaned money to the city, and what else did they do?
They give money to certain businesses. And I've asked, I've asked for a list, and I haven't received a list, of the expenditures and who they've given the money to.
And beyond tax payments, have they had cash to the businesses?
Oh, from what I understand. And the trouble is, I'm, a lot of people are having trouble.
FOIA?
Getting, they've, they've requested FOIA information and they still have not gotten everything.
Sounds like Montgomery County?
They were, I'm sure.
It is in Montgomery County. Okay.
You just chelish it again.
So you had mentioned, kind of in the general introduction, growth is inevitable, but losing our small-town atmosphere is not. Tell, allow us to tell the audience how you want to keep that small-town feel as you continue to grow. Because that's a, it's a tough, a tall order, yeah.
Oh, it is. I'm going to backtrack a little bit because I had an idea back when zoning came and before the planned development district was there. That was the first big development in Montgomery. And that was to do something along the lines of cities or areas like the Woodlands that have an area with a certain architectural control. So basically, I didn't want it real strict, but just in the flavor of the architect of the city. For example, we have a great donut store that came into Montgomery, but it's sitting next to an old historic-looking schoolhouse. If we had had those architectural controls, you would have a donut shop that looked like a historic building. It's not that difficult to change the outside exterior to make it have the feel of an old town. Now, that was squashed. I would probably bring that idea up again. But so many developers kind of want to come do their own thing, cookie-cut stuff, you know, and make as much money as they can. So you also have to look at the developers as well. But there, one thing I want to point out, there's been huge expenditures in engineering with the city, engineering fees. And the council seems, or the mayor, I don't know who, seems to be, well, pass it on to the developer. Well, that's not right either. I mean, there's certain obligations a developer has, but you can't saddle them with unnecessary expenditures.
So you mentioned before, a lot of growth. And then recently, legislature was, it passed that, you know, you've got to get permission now to annex someone at any vote. And with that annexation, or if you have a bug, you have capital investment. How do you balance, when you look out at a fast-growing city, how do you balance the water and sewer needs at the annexed areas versus the, your cost and the wilderness of communities being annexed? How do you, what's the issues you did?
Well, I think this city had done this a long time ago. And we did apply for a water tower. And, because we did want to loop the city back in the early 90s. And it, because of technical difficulties in the writing of the grant, and I think so many people in cities are aware of how you have to be very precise and everything, we didn't get the grant for technical reasons, but we would have qualified otherwise. I do not know now how many grants or applications have been gone, you know, sought after by the city. I would put that as a priority because I think what you need is, if you have the bones, our town is not that big. So I think we could get the funding, because it would be smart funding, to put the infrastructure or the main, major trunks of a water sewer system in. And then, as developers come in, pay and help with the minor lines. And because if you let this growth go willy-nilly without the main skeleton or bones of this developed, you're just going to have headache after headache after headache, figuring how are you going to go here and there and build a house over this and that? And I just don't, I think it's not a good, strong plan. I think you need a major plan.
Do you know who the engineering or has been done by?
It's changed so many times. It was Carter Burgess, I don't know who it is right now.
Do you know if any of the elected officials are getting kickbacks from any of the engineering groups?
I don't know. But I've heard, but I don't know. I do not know.
Awesome. Well, having developed property myself, the cities and the counties, they can dump as much money cost on the developers that they want. All they're going to do is pass it along to people who buy their property.
Right.
And so that's another economic situation to think about when they do that kind of thing.
Exactly.
If you want your city to grow, that is, if you're trying to grow in a constructive way. Also, you spoke of infrastructure, and I think it's, it is a key element for cities to, to put in the basic direction.
Right.
And then they pay for tap, tap use and they finish out. But my question is this, early, I was reading through this thing, you talk about reckless spend. I want, I want you to talk to me because I am an avid, I'm an avid anti-reckless spending guy. I would like for you to talk to us a little bit about the areas of reckless spending that you know of and how you think the council should address that stuff.
Roughly, I'm aware of the rough spending in the engineering lines the last couple of years. I really don't want to get specific.
I understand.
But that's, that's one of the things that is unnecessary. So many things that are just common sense. For example, we were losing tens of thousands of gallons of water. Cost, and it, I don't know how much, but it was five figures, financially-wise, of monies being for this water that couldn't find out where it went. Well, it's not, the city's not that big. You can walk the lines. Well, there was, finally, they went to check on a line behind a building. There was a little lake there. I reported a bust in the line. Five days later, I called again, no, nobody's come out to fix this. This water's running down this hill into the creek. So there's common sense things you can do. You, I just, I just think you need to, I would focus on infrastructure needs, water sewer, roads, sidewalks, safety things like that. And then, it doesn't mean you can't look at the other things at the time, but I would, I would concentrate on those, especially the things that we have had plans for since the 90s and never have done.
Right, right. Could you expand a little bit more on your thoughts in master planning your community?
The...
You want to wait for the...
We'll wait. Okay, somebody else is going to ask that question.
That's going to take some time. Go ahead. Take my time.
There's only four quadrants in town. And one quadrant is pretty much a planned development district. And that's being developed pretty heavily and pretty planned out. One quadrant has nothing there, no water sewer power, anything. The quadrant down Old Plantersville Road, which would be the southwest quadrant, that needs a major water sewer line. And then you've got the, I guess you'd call it the southeast quadrant, is property that I don't even think is even available for sale. So I think you look at the city as a whole, even that property that's not available for sale, and look at that because when it does become available, of course, people are going to run to buy it. But you've got some major lines there that have been built into the whole system. And then you don't have, what are we going to do now? And try to take old lines and put new trunks in and where are we going to put this lift station, et cetera? You've got a master plan. And I think with a town our size, because it is small, you need that.
So most of the development is the northeast quadrant right now, right?
Correct.
Down with Kroger, all the way to the community center, and then between 105 and West Art Parkway, I think.
I'm just going to throw this out because it's still 30 seconds on the clock. I thought it was really funny.
It's okay.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Well, I gave you some mine. Okay, okay. I think it's funny, you mentioned the donut. My son has a business down there on the, right there in the square. And he absolutely is, he gets upset every time he drives by that donut for the same exact reason what you said. He says, "That donut place does not belong in our city."
Well, you know, I'm surprised because I hear that from so many people. And it's not the shop, I mean, it's not the donuts.
It's the shape.
The shape and the store.
That's it. It's modern and everything around it is not.
Yeah, that's...
So I just thought, I'll throw that out there.
Okay, I'm going to expose my ignorance. MEDC, obviously, you're not a fan. It's probably not an elected position. If I wanted to be on MEDC, what would I do to get on there? And why would I want to be on there? Because I guess probably it wasn't a developer, right?
The, I'd have to look at the, the rules, if they're still the same as they used to be. But they're appointed by council. Sometimes the mayor can appoint, is how it, how it used to be. And there's usually a council, there is usually a council person on the board. But, you know, they kind of do their own thing and nobody really watches them. Several council people I know and people in the town have asked for information. I don't think any person I've talked to who's requested information has gotten a complete answer with the information they've received.
So their accountability is the council own?
Well, the MEDC president, chairperson, is paid $1,000 a month for, I guess it's called, website, putting things on, you know, the Facebook page of the city. But there's no description of hours, what she's, what's done, whatever. I did ask if she pays herself. That, that is not allowed, which I was glad to hear. That made me feel so much better because nobody should internally pay themselves at any city position for anything with a city check. But I've talked to other cities about how they handle that. And they said, "We don't pay anybody except a city employee and we make sure it's somebody's job, whether it's a city administrator, assistant city administrator, the secretary." That's... That's, it's their job to do it. We don't take that out of a budget, MEDC, and pay a citizen that.
Do you know if that person's related to anybody on the council?
Well, she was on the council. Um, I know she's friends with the mayor, but I don't, she's, there's no relation that I'm aware of.
What's, what's their name? Who's heading that up now?
Rebecca Huss.
Heard that name.
Okay. All right. So what are the pros and cons that you weighed when you got to your answer of yes concerning same sex penitents?
Um, because I know a lot of people who are gay and some that are married. And I think I know how they feel about each other and I know their, their commitment to each other. Some of these people have been in commitment, committed relationships for a long, long time, more than some married people I know. And in situations where they have the same, they, they're in a committed relationship and the other person dies, I think they should be able to get the same benefits that a legal, I guess, a marriage union.
Traditional.
Traditionally. Yeah, I, um, I just, I, I don't judge people. I, I mean, I, I...
You don't think it's imitation for somebody to say, "Hey, Joe, I don't have a job and I don't have insurance." Why don't you say, "We're, we're married and give you some insurance?"
Well, I don't think you can do that because, first of all, to be legally married, some states will, you know, it's, it's legal to marry same sex marriages. Otherwise, people, there's men, women that aren't married and live together. But after a certain amount of time, it's considered a legal marriage. And so it would have to be, fall under the same pretenses.
So does the city give opposite sex unmarried partners benefits?
I actually don't know. I don't know. I haven't heard anybody ask that.
So if that were part of the question, would you say that it would go to married same sex relationships or does any two people that want to help each other out?
No, no, no. I think it would be, it would have to be, it would have to fall under the legal definition, you would say, of a marriage. So if, if, say a man and a woman don't get married, but they're living together and legally after X amount of time, they're considered, I don't know, I don't know the law there.
There, there is no time limit. It's whether you portray yourself or state that you're married.
It can actually, it can actually be designated in as less, in as little as six months.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that.
You have, you have to make the statement that you're married in order for it to, to be common law.
Yeah. Joint bank accounts and you have to go around and call each other husband and wife and blah, blah, blah.
Well, I don't know anybody personally that would do that just to get insurance. If they, I, I, I just don't.
Well, it's usually a pretty big expense, but.
Yeah.
Maybe it depends.
A lot of governments only, only subsidize the choreo cost anyway. PRs are that way. Spouse cost is very expensive.
Okay. All right. We've got about five minutes. Were you able, I guess at the time the budget was not available, and bond rating said you would receive updated information later this week. Have you completed that? Did you get that?
I don't know the bond rating. But I, I did see something very interesting there is, and I don't remember his name, but there's a gentleman who is going to try to restructure, refinance the bonds, which will be a huge rate to, savings to the city. And they voted to go ahead and have him go down those roads to do that, which would be a huge, over five hundred thousand dollar savings in the long run and thirty-two or four thousand a year. So it would be a good savings there. So I think they're prudent with that.
Are you extending the length or are you keeping the current length?
Keep it current.
Because CISD did that a number of times where they went ahead and redid the bonds, but extended the length to thirty, thirty years.
Yeah. I had an interview about it.
No, this won't extend. From what I, I understood, no, it was a Zoom meeting, so I couldn't ask any questions. But, um, and don't always get the whole, you know, gist sometimes. But from what I understand, it sounded like a good move to me.
So, you know, most cities, the, the cost is water and fire, a bunch of things. So can you, can you speak a little bit about what Montgomery's experiencing towards, you know, police and fire protection?
Um, we have a fabulous fire department in Montgomery, fabulous. But one thing that's very scary to me is we have fire go across our property three times. And the first time, the first two times, there was heavy duty equipment where the fire started. They had bulldozers. So they were able to stop the fire from getting to the property on our other side. The third time, it got out of control. Their machines and everything couldn't stop it. So the fire department had to come back behind our house, behind our barn, through our pasture, over the creek, and they put it out. But we live in a quadrant of town that, along Lone Star Parkway, if somebody throws a match out on a dry day, there is nothing stopping what's coming into town if the wind's blowing right. And that should, that's, that's one of my reasons of looping the town is because there are so many places where there's fire hazards. And I don't know why no one has done anything about that because it's really, really dangerous, especially when Magnolia caught on fire years ago. I moved a bunch of my horses because I thought if, if there's a fire here, there, no stopping it.
So there's no water lines, there's a lot of Lone Star?
Nothing. Absolutely nothing. And nothing but timber and brush till it gets to that part of town. College, Caroline, over to one forty-nine, you can't, you won't, you know. And we just got working hydrants, I think around two thousand and two, down, down a couple of the main streets in our town. So, I mean, that's my point, as I have lived here long enough to know that there's really big needs for these simple, what we consider every day, oh, there's a fire hydrant, that'll, that'll take care of it. Nope. So we need that.
Good. So on your bio, you said BS, A and M. What was your discipline, your major?
I was a teacher.
Teacher.
Can anybody guess? Nobody ever guesses it right. I was a shop teacher. So I was, my degree was under...
My favorite degree.
My degree was under industrial, uh, technology, under industrial engineering department. And I was kind of surprised when I went in the classroom that, you know, I, I didn't, I only had three education, you know, syllabus, classes, things like that. Everything else was...
So you're a pretty good welder, huh?
I used to be. I haven't, well, in eighty-five, eighty-six was the last time I taught. And a couple of years after that, they did away with shop. You know, you've got ag, but you don't have home ec and you don't have shop anymore in schools.
Yeah.
So.
Got an age to the test.
So you have, you have a busy life.
Yes.
And you've done this before. So you're obviously aware of the time coming. That a good job requires, not just attending the meetings.
Yes.
But a good job requires, so are you prepared to make that?
Well, now I have a cell phone and before I didn't. It's going to be easy.
So we've, we brought up the, the fire and, and law enforcement. We, we talked about the fire. I'm on the board for the hospital district, so we get along real well. But I'm, I'm concerned with the police department and the past history and, and where it's going and the, the possible need for growth there as well. As y'all continue to expand, the traffic continues to get much more. And it's hard for them to keep up with, with everything. Do you have any insight to, or thoughts about what you might do?
Well, I do know that, I've seen the, the county and the state cars out there. I would like to see our own police force out a lot more than I have. I, I have not met the new chief. I haven't seen him. I only know about two of the men that are on the force now. So before, I used to know everybody on the force. I knew the chief. All, up until Chief Napolitan retired. And, and I, and I can tell you, he is the best chief we ever have had. He, he did phenomenal work.
Oh, totally.
Yeah. Very good work. And there, we've never really had crime in Montgomery. We, we really haven't. And I'm worried that, that door's going to get open if our police department doesn't stay on top of things. And I haven't heard complaints about Chief Solomon, but I just don't see our cars as often as I'd like to see them.
Do you think more crime's going to come with the new apartment complex coming in?
Well, I don't, I can't say that it's going to be the apartment that's going to do it. I think just...
Well, the apartment will go, but the people will.
The, the number of people.
Right.
That, that are coming is going to definitely be an issue. But one of the things I'd like to point out is, and I called the city about this, is when we made the zoning ordinance and we zoned the city and the planned development district, we only designated, I think, three places for apartments in the city. Because the one thing the city fathers and mothers didn't want is more apartments than single family homes. When the new apartment complex behind Kroger goes in, there will be more apartments than single family homes in that town. And I was told that was supposed to be a town home, town halls. Now, I don't know how they were able to switch that and the city council not know anything about it or stop it. So there's a lot of things I don't know and, and bother me as well.
Okay. I assume that you are familiar with the issue that come out with Judge Mack and the lawsuits against him and so forth?
Not Judge Mack, no. I did not know. I don't get the Continental Courier, I need to read some stuff.
He opens his court with prayer.
Oh, oh, oh.
And Freedom from Religion Foundation. Okay, so that's kind of why our question was in here. And your answer was kind of brief and I'd like you to elaborate. You said, "I would fight to retain our current practices." I don't know, your council's open with prayer and, and if Freedom from Religion Foundation came in, and would you say, "Oh, well, it's not worth it"? Or would you say, "We're going to fight like Judge Mack fought"? Or, so please elaborate a little bit on that.
When we chose to, my husband's company moved us to the Houston area. So we could have lived anywhere in the Houston area. We went, my husband and I went to three A high schools and our oldest daughter was starting kindergarten and we wanted a small school and Montgomery schools were good and it was the atmosphere we loved. And that's why we went there. And very conservative area. The schools opened up with prayer always. You know, our city council opens. I am all for Judge Mack and what he does. And I would be somebody who would fight for that because I think it's our God given right to say our prayer. Well, plus, I grew up in Catholic schools. He said prayers all the time. So I'm, that, I would fight for that.
A lot of people look at the legal costs and say, "It ain't worth it."
Oh, it is worth it.
Good to hear that. So they do that now?
Yeah.
They say pledges?
All right, that's it. If you want to close this up with a closing statement, that'd be great.
I would appreciate all the voters in Montgomery's support to elect Jenny Stewart, John Champagne and Tom Cronin for the city council this next election, April first. Thank you.
Thank you.